I'm going to open the December 9, 2020, meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. We expect to have other commissioners join us in due time. Let's see. In the meantime, we do have a quorum, so we'll proceed with the meeting tonight. We have minutes for October 14th. Are there any questions or additions for that? No, nothing being heard. We'll move to correspondence. Mr. Meesmer, do we have any new correspondence?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, first of all, I'd like to welcome Ms. Linda Martin. Linda comes to us with previous Planning Commission experience, so we're excited to have her on our team. She is filling the vacant position from Ms. Andrew Adolph. We also have this evening, new, which I don't see yet. I know Gary, Mr. Gary Molinex is looking at trying to get into the meeting with Matt Kaufman. And Mr. Molinex comes to us as a new Planning Commissioner, filling Jeff Mount's vacant position. He's a geographer and planner with 30 years' experience. So we have a couple of people, new people in the commission with lots of background in planning.
Excellent. Let's see. Well, tonight, we'll be conducting a joint ecology city public hearing regarding the Shoreline Master Program periodic update. Just a quick note for the agenda. We'll have a staff presentation, followed by an open hearing with some public comments. After we close the hearing, we'll have a brief discussion about next steps. So, Mr. Meesmer, you want to take it away?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to try and share my screen. Bill, with me, if you would. Get this going here. Matt, if you could help me with allowing screen share. Having some technical difficulties with being able to share my screen. It tells me-
Is this when we have the elevator music going in?
Yeah. Yeah. It'll be the perfect time. May I give Matt a call and see if he makes sure that he's... I need to be able to share my screen.
He'll share your screen now.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Okay, now let's figure out where I go from here. Matt, how can I pick up a file off of my desktop?
Well, are you just trying to share that one file, what you're saying?
Yeah, it's on my desktop, on my view.
Are you just trying to view it to everyone? I would say, you show one screen, and I just have that document open.
Okay, well, I'm going to need to-
Yeah, I'll reboot it.
I've got to be able to get to it here.
In the meantime, welcome, Gary.
Thank you. It's a great pleasure to be here.
We're fortunate to have someone with the experience of our new members. Sure will be very helpful.
Okay, so I've got a PowerPoint up with page one. Can anybody see it?
Nope.
Matt, how do I get this to show up?
So you should go, be able to share now, so.
Okay. Can anybody see that?
No.
Okay. Having a little problem here, Matt. All right. Okay, so, for this evening, we have the Anacortes Shorelines Master Program periodic update. This is a joint public hearing with the Washington State Department of Ecology, and of course, the update is based on Shorelines Management Act, Chapter 90.58 RCW, and WAC 17396. Ahead to the next one, please. So, our plan for the night, introductions and backgrounds, staff, and then proposed amendments, presentation with Watershed Company, public hearing, some PC discussion around any concerning points that they may have. I had Alex. And then, we also have four introductions. First of all, I'd like to introduce Ms. Maria Sandra Cook. She is a Shorelines Planner with the Washington State Department of Ecology. Maria, if you're here on our Zoom meeting, if you could please let us know a little bit about yourself and your role with Ecology on this update.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, great. It's great to be here. So, as Don mentioned, I'm a Shoreline Planner with the Department of Ecology, and we're here tonight because the Anacortes Shoreline Master Program is a cooperative program between the city and Ecology. So, this public hearing and the public comment period that we're in is being held jointly between the city and Ecology. If any oral comments received today or written comments that the city receives will be forwarded to us, too, and we'll have copies of those. And after the comment period closes, the city will eventually be submitting the proposed amendments to Ecology for an initial determination of consistency with the SMP approval criteria. So that'll take the form of a memo we'll provide to the city with our initial determination and any changes the amendment might need to have. And then the city can take that into consideration before adopting the final amendment.
Well, thank you, Maria, I appreciate that. We have the Watershed Company with us tonight, the consultant working with us in this update, Alex Capron and Dan Nickel. So hello, Alex and Dan.
Hello. Yeah, unfortunately, Dan couldn't be here tonight, but yeah, I'll be running through some of the more significant amendments to the SMP after this intro presentation.
Sounds good. Perfect. We can move on to the next one, if you'd like, Alex. So, the authority for SMP amendments, WAC 173, 26092A. Each local government is required to conduct a review of the master program at least once every eight years, so this is our time to do that. Originally, the update was due June 2020, and then Ecology extended that time period because of various reasons, including COVID-19, through to June of 2021. The review, of course, ensures compliance with SMA requirements, state rules that may have been added or modified since last update in 2010, and ensures the SMP remains consistent with amended comprehensive plans and regulations. Incorporates amendments seem necessary to reflect changes circumstances, new information, or approved app. And we can go on to the next one, Alex. Thank you. So, Ecology's review criteria, as Maria mentioned, is a proposed amendment will not foster uncoordinated and piecemeal development of the state's shorelines, is consistent with all applicable policies and standards of the SMA, meets all the procedural requirements for public notice and consultation, and satisfies master program guidelines, analytical requirements and substantive standards included. The amendment will not result in a net loss of shoreline ecological functions. And then on to the next one, there we go. So, the comment period opportunities are a 30-day public comment period. So after this evening's meeting, you still may submit written comments through close of work the day of December 18, 2020. To provide comments, include testifying in the public hearing tonight, or submit written comments by December 18, 2020 at 5:00 p.m. to Libby Graves, Planning Manager, LibbyB@cityvancores.org. You can also find this information on the city's Planning Committee and Economic Development website under the page Shorelines Master Program Update. And now, last page, there we go. And the project information, project webpage is located here. So that's my short presentation for the day. I'm looking forward to having a good public comment and moving forward with the Shorelines Master Program amendments and update. Thank you. With that, I think perhaps it'd be a good time to have a presentation from the Watershed Company on the proposed amendments and Shorelines Master Program.
All right. Can everyone see my screen?
Mm-hmm.
Great. All right. Yeah, so again, my name is Alex Capron with the Watershed Company, here tonight to talk to you about the periodic update of the City of Anacortes Shoreline Master Program. And yeah, so just at a high level, it's important to point out that this is not a major update. It isn't a comprehensive update that was last taken back in 2010, in that many of these amendments are there to capture flexibility and clarity in the code language, and as well as provide, yeah, for the framework for shoreline designation changes to match underlying zoning where that makes sense. Okay? And to provide a crosswalk for the changes to the Shoreline Master Program, we prepared a gap analysis report. And this report talks about consistency with state law, as well as changes to critical area regulations and the adoption by reference that will take place. So doing away with the appendix where an older version of the critical area regulations exists, as well as looking at consistency with the comprehensive plan and city municipal code regulations, and development regulations, and then any other issues that both we and city staff have identified. So, yeah, some of the topic areas for tonight's discussion, we will talk about critical area incorporation, incorporating those regulations into the SMP, as well as looking at shoreline environment designations, and some tweaks for limited allowances to aquaculture, as well as, you know, looking at vegetation conservation standards and where that, where those standards can be refined and more prescriptive, and then a more, easier framework to understand the percent slope calculation for residential lots along the conservancy and shoreline residential designations, and then finally, the codification process with bringing the SMP into municipal code. So, yeah, currently, right now, as I mentioned, the SMP is in a separate appendix, so that would go away, and as the new critical area regulations are adopted, they would be adopted by ordinance, so that ordinance placeholder would be there, and then that's referenced under Anacortes Municipal Code, Section 1970. And so with that, there are actual exempt activities that don't apply in shoreline jurisdiction, because they may or may not meet known net loss criteria. So this is important at a SMP framework at a high level, that any development activity has to meet known net loss of shoreline function. And so some of these activities may meet critical area code requirements, but may not readily address the framework of the SMP. So with that, there are sections there under SMP 6.6, and this specific regulation that actually lists out specific permitted activities, tree trimming, reasonable use exemptions, that would need a shoreline permit. They wouldn't be able to just go in without a permit or a critical areas permit. So that these sections in the critical area regulations would still have to go through All right, and for the shoreline environment designations, there are a few changes, and one of the more significant ones is a proposed change from the urban designation to a split between the conservancy and shoreline residential. And previously, when this area was designated, it was thought that a marina or resort community would go in along ship harbor, and actually, the underlying zoning is, in fact, residential. So it more closely matches the shoreline residential and conservancy designations for that area. Now, the other topic, and this has been brought up in previous meetings, is really the subject of the canneries and what the right choice is here for the proper shoreline environment designation landward of the ordinary high water mark. And so the issue is that the underlying zoning is residential, and this is more restrictive than the urban designation, landward of the ordinary high water mark. So with the regulations, the SMP and zoning codes say whichever is most restrictive does prevail. So there is a conflict that's built in there currently. Additionally, this narrow band of land also has some site constraints. So because a lot is narrow, there is certainly some geographic constraints there just related to the lot depth, as well as topography. So on the toe of the slope, landward, on the landward edge of the parcel, it is a regulated steep slope along the shoreline where the railroad grade initially was, just landward of that. So that creates a constraint there as well. And then, yeah, finally, just with parking considerations, being a narrow lot would be difficult to figure out a configuration that would make sense. And so what is the city's vision? So the city is looking towards continuing the Columbus Channel Trail along this stretch. And this is fortunately allowed both in the shoreline residential designation, as well as the urban designation. And then it is supported by the recreational element to provide access either through purchase or usement. And that's, you know, that is the fortunate thing, that the long-term vision makes sense in either shoreline environment designation. Yeah, one of the fundamental conflicts that's listed in the urban designation is that it is appropriate for areas that support or plan for commercial or industrial development. And the land use and the comprehensive plan designation don't support either one of those land uses. It is a residential use. So at that level, you know, there's a conflict. One has to really prevail, or there needs to be some consistency that's established there. Yeah, so while it does make sense to potentially change the urban designation to shoreline residential, it is complicated with some of the harbor provisions at the statewide level. So it is something that is still under consideration. And looking at historic overwater structures like the canneries, there are options there to address the economic viability of these structures. So really, right now, the aquatic designation prohibits all aquaculture except for non-commercial aquaculture. And so by making a change to allow overwater aquaculture that is less than Paksol with a shoreline conditional use permit, it can support the economic viability of these pre-existing And so with that, creating prescriptive language that protects water quality, limited to a few types of aquaculture activities, as well as documenting noise and vehicular traffic, so that the impact would be properly regulated. Yeah, these are options to effectively permit these types of operations. And then if there are any aquaculture activities that exist above water but are outside a pre-existing structure, any containers are strongly regulated, so anything above three feet would require visual impact analysis, and then ensuring that the aquaculture equipment is sound construction, and so that's a condition that would fall on the operator to continue to maintain their equipment. And then, yeah, the last change there is that fishnet pens, which were prohibited under the comprehensive update, that this language just goes away. It doesn't need to stay. And then a final change, and this was a change that wasn't captured before the SMP code language went public as part of the 30-day public comment period, but removing the adjacency language that couples the urban and aquatic and firm. So if there were a change, that any aquaculture that's conditionally permitted could occur, and it wouldn't necessarily need to be adjacent to the urban or urban airtime in shoreline So the vegetation conservation standards, this is something that is tied to, really going back to the Inventory and Characterization Report that was provided as part of the comprehensive update. So that captured a snapshot of vegetation, as well as views that were existing during that time. And so with that, both city staff and us have noticed that neighboring jurisdictions have a 75% crown retention requirement. Island County is a good example. This graphic here actually illustrates some pruning concepts that were taken from a handout that they had provided. And also to assess any trimming impacts for trees adjacent to critical areas, if that trimming impact is affecting the nearshore environment, that that may need to be assessed by a professional as well. So there's some discretion by city staff there. And yeah, I guess the most important key here is that any trimming activities would require a shoreline exemption. And then the shoreline exemption for tree trimming, this kind of walks through the pre and post photo activity documenting which limbs are to be taken down as part of that activity, just to ensure that there's no view creation that's taking place. It's simply for view preservation. Yeah, and then also to encourage low-impact techniques for any development that is occurring in the vegetation conservation area, if that development is done with handheld equipment, that the plan can be prepared by the applicant himself, him or herself, as opposed to if it's done with motorized equipment. And then one key change that had occurred from the last Planning Commission meeting, one of the commissioners, I believe, had brought up the note that for any trees removed, any non-native trees removed, they're replaced at a one-to-one ratio for trees, in addition to the requirements there for Title 16 tree preservation. And then the percent slope calculation, so this is a regulation only within shoreline jurisdiction that limits the amount of impervious surface. And before, it was unclear which part of the lot was calculated, and these are adjacent to marine bluff areas. So in this next slide, it actually is an example, example drawing that was prepared and submitted to the city that shows the calculation, and as part of that calculation, the actual marine bluff is not part of the slope. So it'd just be slope landward of the marine bluff, and in terms of the lot, it would just, it's just within shoreline jurisdiction as this darker gray area indicates. Yeah, so within, landward of the ordinary high water mark within shoreline jurisdiction that is part of that calculation. So there isn't a regulatory change here, it's a clarification, just so that the applicant and city staff understand, yeah, which part of the lot applies in the calculation. And then finally, the codification process. So in terms of codifying the SMP and the timing, this will occur after the public comment period and after the SMP has been submitted to Ecology for initial determination. So the whole process there will look at a response to public comments through a response matrix and changes, and then after initial determination and responding to concerns from Ecology there, then the SMP will be codified. It will be essentially ready to go. So that takes these chapters two, three, and then five through 12, those are the development regulations, and then the goals and policies, yeah, within chapter four will be placed into the comprehensive plan within the shoreline. And then, yeah, looking at our timeline, so as Don mentioned, there are about nine days left in the joint public comment period. And yeah, as I mentioned with previous slides, after the joint public comment period, within 30 days of that period, there will be a response matrix and any subsequent changes to the SMP. And yeah, that package will be submitted to Ecology for their initial determination, their initial review. And yeah, hopefully, there will be one additional Planning Commission review and recommendation at the beginning of the year, followed by a local adoption by city council, spring of 2021. And so with that, there is the project website, and- And so with that, there is the project website, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners about the presentation? Okay, is there anything more, Mr. Miesmer, before we proceed to the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I think you're ready to go with the public hearing and receiving comments.
Do we have any idea how many people are planning on or requesting this?
Matt, do you have an idea of those folks that are waiting to comment?
Out of the two people we have in our lobby, we have two people with their hands raised. Three, four people, five.
Okay, thank you. We will open the public hearing for comments, and just to note a couple of items, for those who choose to speak, please be sure and provide your name and address. We would ask that you let me your comments to approximately three minutes. I would suggest that you summarize your main points, and then follow up with written feedback to ensure that we have a complete and accurate information, and submit that by the end of the comment period on December 18th. There will not be a major discussion with the planning commission at this time. We'll do that at a later open meeting. However, commissioners, you may feel free to ask for clarification from any of the speakers, and at the close of the hearing, we'll summarize the next steps. Shall we go ahead and start the public commentary thing?
Our first person, Kathleen, with her hand raised. Kathleen, you need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Kathleen Lawrence Flanagan. I live at 2005 10th Street in Anacortes, and I'm speaking on behalf of Evergreen Islands and myself. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My comments are limited to chapter 6.5 on vegetation conservation. Some of the updates have indeed strengthened protection of trees and vegetation. For example, the change of wording from shall to must throughout this chapter is stronger, and that's appreciated. The focus on tree trimming for view presentation versus creation is also stronger. Compliance and oversight, however, remain a big concern. Nothing in the chapter speaks to who will monitor compliance, for example, at the one-year, two-year, and five-year marks specified in the regulations. This spring, we witnessed tree removal and trimming along a part of the Gwemyss Channel Trail that basically amounted to a clear cut. When the workers were questioned, they said trees had been marked by city staff. Of what use are regulations when even the city does not implement them? It's recommended a clear process for oversight of compliance be addressed, as well as what consequences there may be when regulations are not met. Some general comments. First, there's a change in height for replacement of coniferous trees from the current standard of at least five feet in height to up to eight feet, which means a three-inch tree could be planted, and perhaps that's appropriate, but I'm wondering what the rationale is for the change and what are the best science practices. Secondly, consistent identification of who is responsible for certain decisions would be helpful. For example, it stated that a proposed watering system needs approval, but it doesn't say who the grantor of that approval is. Thirdly, it seems like education of developers, realtors, buyers, et cetera, seems key to compliance with these regulations, and so it's recommended that a plan be included for how this might be facilitated. And then fourth, when exemptions are granted on permit applications, it's requested that the type of exemption be named. And then finally, unrelated to chapter 6.5, but related to the shoreline, I want to comment on the November 4th Anacortes American article about the condemned fish plant that sits between Anchor Cove Marina and Trident Seafood at 50 K. The site is zone light manufacturing, and that plus shoreline regulations reportedly prevents the owner from building four condominiums there. It's also noted that a conditional use permit for condos is not allowed. The article goes on to say that contractor Strandberg is hoping for a change in the SMP that will allow the condos to be built. To change regulations for a specific site and a specific contractor seems unconscionable, and I just hope that what was reported is not reality. Thank you for your time and also for the work that you have done on this document. It's pretty onerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Our next speaker is?
Our next speaker is Martha Hall.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm Martha Hall, Anacortes. I would like to, I'm commenting on a couple of things, and I'll send in comments. I'd like to see a positive purpose to the plan on page two, that the city is adopting this plan because it wants to protect our environment and wildlife that uses the shoreline environment as public assets that are really valued. It sounds more like reading the purpose, that it was kind of dragged to the table and forced to do this. And I think citizens really support protecting salmon and orcas, and I'd like to see us seen as a community that believes in this. Second is, who is the shoreline administrator throughout this program and this plan? I don't know who that is, and I'm wondering if they're qualified to make the decisions that are given to this person. And related to this, is this person impartial? And this is especially important because the city of Anacortes is often the applicant who's seeking the permits required under this plan, such as permits to build the Gwemyss Channel Trail or building a ship that the city has wanted for so long. I believe that when the applicant is the city, the application and process should be handled by someone who's impartial, not the city, for all the obvious reasons that many have watched for the last 10 years as the city built broad paved transportation routes along a long stretch of the shoreline of Gwemyss Channel. When the city was done, no impartial judge would say that there was no net loss of ecological function. There was a huge loss on this shoreline. The city denies this, but since they're the judge and jury, they're right. The project was not completed as promised or described. The mitigation has still not been completed. Even a simple signage has not been completed correctly. These projects were completed under our shoreline master plan, and it failed to meet the standard, no ecological loss. What happened and how did it fail? Violations and inadequate mitigation also occurred on private property. This was allowed, the city allowed this, and the plan failed. Until we find out why the plan failed for the last 10 years, we won't know if it'll work in the next 10 years. Under mitigation, I'd like to mention three things. First, that the city should not be waived or excluded from having to have a performance bond. We have seen in the last 10 years that the city doesn't perform well, and to exclude itself is kind of disingenuous, and it's, we know it's dangerous. So I oppose having a waiver for the city. Also, the monitoring plants for only five years is not adequate. We know this again from the projects that we've watched in the last 10 years. Some of them are not done, and they're 10-year-old projects. So the monitoring should occur as long as the standards, and the promises have not been kept. If it takes 20 years until it has been done, the projects were approved as no net loss of ecological function based on mitigation. And third, the public needs to be involved in mitigation. As it stands now, the public is not allowed to see, comment, or even have information on mitigation. I've been told more than once that this just is not something that the public has a right to see, and we don't see it, and we can't find out about it. This needs to change because we are the police department on some of these projects. It's not the city who's policing city projects. There's not nearly enough public involvement and review and participation in much of this document, and I think that that needs to be looked at throughout this. And again, this is for city projects as well as on private property. The draft says the shoreline of Little Cranberry would be included as well as Big Beaver Pond. Based on the same criteria used to include Big Beaver Pond, I believe that the wetlands above Big Beaver would also qualify. Those wetlands and the year-round streams connecting them do influence our shoreline. They hold and slowly release water that drains into the saltwater. The city controls and limits the holding capacity of both Big Beaver and Little Cranberry Lake. Holding this water is very important to our shoreline rather than letting it run out. This wetland system is very beneficial to salmon and orcas in our marine habitats, and perhaps the same thing could be done about another, said about another extensive wetland at Smiley's Bottom. It's a natural valley that also holds city stormwater runoff. Holding stormwater, filtering it, is extremely important. And thank you, time's up.
Hey, Martha, can you give us your address?
Yes, 2617 16th Street.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, and we look forward to seeing your written comments.
We have Mr. Rick Eggers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Hi, my name is Rick Eggers. My address is 1304 39th Street in Bellingham, Washington. And I am the chairperson of the Mount Baker Group of the Sierra Club, and I, before I mentioned why I'm addressing you, I wanted to mention that I really appreciate, and I think all of us appreciate, the amount of work that has gone into this by the commission, the staff, the watershed group. We do acknowledge it is tremendous amount of effort, and we commend you all for doing such a great job. Thank you. What I want to mention is that in Sierra, in the Mount Baker Group, we encompass San Juan, Skagit, and Watcom counties. In Anacortes alone, we have about 260 members. In Skagit, we have about 550 members, and the entire membership of the group is of almost 3,000 in the three counties. But when you look at our supporters as well, those who aren't necessarily members but support what we do in Sierra Club, Skagit has nearly 2,500 supporters. Watcom, another nearly 6,000, San Juan County, nearly 1,000. And I mention this because the areas, the shoreline areas of Anacortes are truly a regional resource. You have state parks, I'm sorry, not state parks necessarily, but parkland, beaches, the state ferry comes into Anacortes. These are areas that are used not just by those in Anacortes, but by the entire region. They are a true regional gem of a resource, and I encourage you to keep that in mind. I realize you're the Anacortes Planning Commission, but you have to recognize, and I hope you recognize, that these lands are utilized by far more than just the city of Anacortes, and they should be valued as a regional resource that needs to remain a regional resource and needs to be dealt with, with that in mind. So I thank you again for your time and allowing me to comment, and I am done.
Thank you, Mr. Eggers.
We now have Bill Gregory. I'm allowed to talk now.
Hello, my name is Bill Gregory. I'm from 816 Thurman Lane in Cedar Woolley. I am the Skagit County representative for the Mount Baker Sierra Club. We do wish, again, to thank the commission for the opportunity to comment on the shoreline management program update, and just to thank you for all the hard work of the commission and staff on taking on this enormous and hugely consequential task. There are several things that we really are pleased about, such as changing the zoning near the cannerys from urban to residential. Also happy about the change, the request for a habitat assessment report for projects near shoreline marine environment, as is recommended on page 14 of the watershed company gap analysis. The protection of vegetation trees along the shoreline, as outlined in the update, is also positive as long as the impacts are monitored and enforced. But we do have concerns. Primarily, these relate to the expansion of the Gwemyss Channel Trail through Shannon Point, as noted in Appendix B-4 dot 1 dot 3, Table B7. The best news there is that perhaps through previous very significant public input, the proposal excludes the area in and around Ship Harbor Wetland. This is an extremely sensitive and fragile remnant of what used to be a thriving shoreline and upline, and cannot withstand the impact of a trail through it. The not-so-good news is that there's no mention of how the existing trail will connect to the proposed Shannon Point section. Like many of you, I like to hike and walk, and Anacortes is blessed with an abundance of trails with incredible beauty and environmental significance. With great resources, however, comes great responsibility, so much is the loss already, even with the best of intentions, and even more will be irreparably lost if the trail through Shannon Point is built as proposed. First, what is proposed is not a trail, but a road, a 12-foot-wide paved impermeable dash, a virtual highway built for speed and convenience, destroying the very nature it purports to value. There are places on Shannon Point where the bluff has sloughed to the shoreline on one side, with steep banks to a wetland on the other, bordered on the far side by another steep bank with housing above. How can you build the proposed 12-foot-wide trail there without armoring the bluff or destroying the wetland? Sadly, it is possible that the potential for the funding of this project might be through state or highway funds, which would require this massive 12-foot-wide roadway and the damage that would entail. A small path, lightly gravelled, and thoughtfully placed would open this amazing area to people who would take the time to stroll through the beautiful landscape. I'm asking that paved trails be prohibited in the Shannon Point Preserve and the Ship Harbor area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Our next talker is Brian Wetcher.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Brian Wetcher. I live at 2407 Forest Park Lane in Anacortes. My concerns tonight are with conditional use in this document. In this draft, almost every area on the shoreline is subject to prohibited conditional use. Over the years, Anacortes has had many, many controversies involving ambiguous and contradictory regulatory language, particularly around projects on the shoreline. The SMP is basically a zoning document. As such, the zoning document of the, part of the SMP should be clear and consistent. Considering that many of the decisions in the public process now are now relegated to administrative decisions about the threshold approval of many of these projects, I would say that we need to eliminate the conditional use in all of these areas because either a use should be permitted a use should be permitted or it should not be permitted. Accordingly, if we allow conditional uses throughout these areas, we ensure that there will be controversy eventually with the surrounding community through conflicting uses. Further, once these projects are conditioned, we do not have a compliance mechanism to allow for monitoring of their condition compliance down the road in the future. And this is a future document that we're looking at. So I would also encourage the commission to both read my written comments and to encourage the city to appoint an environmental monitoring designated officer that will be in charge of monitoring long-term conditions for these projects. And I would point as an example that the city has not even complied with many of their own requirements in the permits requiring revegetation on parts of the Tommy Thompson Trail and parts of the Gwemas Trail. So permitted conditional use invites long-term degradation of the shoreline. Either a use should be permitted or it should not be permitted. Let's make the zoning and the uses as clear as possible to avoid as much controversy as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wetcher. Next...
Next, we have Tom Glade.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, this is Tom Glade. I reside at 210 Mansfield Court, and this evening I'm speaking on behalf of Evergreen Islands as well as myself. And so we are very concerned about the shoreline master programs leaning towards historic structures. And in particular, is the, on section, on page 47, is a topic called Use of Historic Overwater Structures. And the part of it says that the City of Anacortes Comprehensive Plan encourages adaptive reuse of historically significant structures. And then Policy 5.6.6 says refurbish or rebuild existing piers and wharves to maintain a modern-day length of history. But we are particularly concerned about the resurrection of projects similar to the JIMs project and other proposals for canneries and the canneries along the Gwemas Channel. To our concerns, we submitted a letter that relies on the legal comments presented by Aramburu and Eustace on behalf of Save Our Neighborhoods. And so JIMs proposed to completely remove an existing deteriorated pier and pilings to construct a completely new overwater commercial development, including a three-story hotel, a two-story restaurant, a large parking lot, parking area, 45 vehicles, together with widening the current access route down the, to the shoreline. The proposed pier will extend 300 feet into the Gwemas Channel and be 120 feet wide. The vast majority of the proposal would be located on public lands owned by the State of Washington. To provide more parking, JIMs purchased nearly a third block of residential neighborhood in the Old Town area, which would be converted into a commercial parking lot by removing the two homes that existed at that location. Since that location was located a half mile from JIMs, JIMs planned to provide a valet service to shuttle people to their facility. The route for the service was not direct and would wind through the neighborhoods. Even with the off-water and the off-site parking, the parking was not sufficient to handle all the customer vehicles during peak events. As a result, customers would park on the neighborhood streets and walk to the JIMs facility. Ostensibly, the shuttle service would operate late into the evening, and throughout the evening, customers would be likely to walk through the quiet neighborhood. JIMs claimed that their proposal was a redevelopment or renovation of the existing pier, but this is not the case. The existing pier and pilings would be completely removed, and a new dock would be constructed. That's the... I'll finish now. Thus, proposed construction cannot be considered repair, maintenance, or replacement of existing structure. The current water-dependent use for related activities will cease to completely. The docking uses would be constructed, will be for purpose, for commercial purposes and non-water-dependent uses. That concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Glade.
Next, we have Dennis Clark.
Hello, this is Dennis Clark from the Washington State Department of Natural Resources. The State Department of Natural Resources manages 2.6 million acres of state-owned aquatic lands for the benefit of all the people of the state. A good number of those acres are in the city of Anacortes. For this reason, the department offers the following comments to the city as it updates its SMP. The department routinely offers comments to cities and counties as they update their SMP. We will submit a letter which covers four points. The most important one is that we request that the city maintain the shoreline environmental designation and the canneries reach as urban and not change it to shoreline residential. Of all the state-owned aquatic lands managed by DNR, among the most important are harbor areas. Established by Article 15 of the Washington State Constitution, harbor areas shall be forever reserved for landings, wharves, streets, and other conveniences of navigation and commerce. The state, in fact, requires local governments to reserve land for harbor areas. Immediately abutting the canneries shoreline environmental designation is the Anacortes Harbor Area. DNR manages the land associated with the canary piers in this reach. We endorse the city keeping the urban classification for the land abutting the harbor area so as to maintain and support the constitutionally established purpose of the harbor area. DNR agrees that the current urban classification of the narrow strip 15 to 100 feet wide is appropriate and properly sustains the urban use of the abutting harbor area. Consequently, DNR is opposed to the proposal to change the canneries SED from urban to shoreline residential. Instead, the inconsistency with the underlying zoning should be addressed by changing the zoning, not the classification. Conclusion, DNR appreciates the strong relationship we have with the city, both in its role as a regulatory entity and as a lessie to the department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Next up, we have Marlene Finley.
Good evening. My name's Marlene Finley. I live at 1410 Kellogg Place in Anacortes, and I'm speaking tonight representing both Evergreen Islands and myself. First, I want to talk about some of the positive changes in the draft SMP. Changing the shoreline environment designation between the canneries is a positive. It'll better reflect the residential neighborhood, the nature of these neighborhoods, and it will avoid and reduce future land use conflicts. Also, changing the SED at the bottom of Edward's Way near Ship Harbor is a positive. It makes sense. Also, a positive is the making changes that improve the consistency between the comprehensive plans, the critical area ordinances, and the shoreline master program. And lastly, I wanted to mention the positive changes that are proposed in Chapter 6 on vegetation and conservation standards, as Alex described earlier. These will further protect trees and vegetation along the shoreline. Also, I want to compliment the city planning staff for improving and updating maps during this process and making them available to the public. A few concerns I have. One, where is the requirement for habitat assessment reports in the update? The gap report recommended that the city require habitat assessment reports for projects adjacent to the shoreline marine environment to help calculate buffers for critical saltwater habitat, and I can't find that requirement. Also, at some point, we need to update the shoreline inventory and assessments. In order to do adaptive management, you have to have monitoring. Chapter 4 talks about restoration and adaptive management. It also talks about incentives to reduce buffer, to allow for reducing buffers and setbacks, but you can't do that if you don't know the status of your shoreline. I want to encourage processes in reviewing conditional uses, variances, and mitigation that are public processes, that are open processes. With more flexibility added to this update, we need to make sure there's an opportunity for the public to know and to comment on changes that are proposed. And last, the final gap analysis makes it mandatory to list and map streams and lakes. I can't find this in the update. So that's the last area of concern, is where is a list and a map of streams and lakes? I appreciate the hard work that's going into this update and hope these comments are useful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finley. Do we have any other speakers?
No one else has their hands up at this time. We do have one caller who called in. I just wanted to remind them, if you did want to speak, it's *9. But as of right now, no one else has their hands raised. Carol Borden just raised her hand.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a full comment on behalf of Marlene Finley's comments. I fully endorse and accept what she has just presented to the commission. I appreciate all her hard work and all the hard work that all of you are putting into it from the city and planning commission this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Borden. Last call. Do we have any other speakers? None being evident, I will close the public hearing at this time. We'll now discuss next steps. Mr. Meesmer, do you have some comments?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, yes. So as Alex mentioned in his presentation, we will now be compiling all the comments that we received, those that we have already received in writing, those that we will continue to receive until the 18th. We will compile those into a matrix. We will provide responses to all those, work with the Department of Ecology, and then come back to the planning commission for more conversations on the comments that we've received and on the SMP draft. So we won't be coming back until, of course, after the holidays, and so it'll probably be early next year, mid to late January, depending on the written comments and the compilation of the responses for the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. We'll look forward to the information being pulled together for the commission to review. I wanted to thank all of the members of the public for their very thoughtful comments. Do any commissioners have anything they want to add?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I had one question. This whole discussion about changing the nomenclature, the urban versus residential, I know that's been reviewed three times now, but we've never really had a discussion about it, the pros and cons, and what is the purpose for doing it long-term? Is that, can we do that at some point?
I would expect that when we get the material back from the staff, that that will prompt us to have a number of discussions. Am I correct, Mr. Meesmer?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Is that all right with you, Mr. Court?
That is absolutely perfect.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we will close the meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission for December 9th, 2020. Happy holidays, everybody, and we'll see you next year.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, y'all.
Same to you all. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.